Good morning. We are convening today's Culture and the Arts Committee hearing. We are in room 309. Today is Wednesday, February 5th, and this is our 10:30 a.m. agenda. We are going to go right into it. We have HB 531 relating to special number plates. This is authorizing the issuance of special number plates to recognize the University of Hawaii Cancer Center. Up first, we have, and our only testifier on the list, is Cynthia Au with the American Cancer Society Action Network in person. Not here, or potentially on Zoom? Okay, she's not here. So members, seeing that there's no one to ask questions of, we will be moving forward. I will note that American Cancer Society was in support, and that was my only testifier on the list. Moving on to our next measure, HB 458 relating to Brother Joseph Dutton Day, we have the State Comptroller in support, in person.
Aloha, mai kako, Chair. Representative, on behalf of Keith Regan, Comptroller from the Department of Accounting and General Services, I am Dr. Adam Jansen. It is my privilege and honor to serve as your State Archivist. And DAG stands very strongly in support of this bill. Any opportunity we have to highlight the history of Hawaii should be maximized. And as Brother Dutton is both the spiritual and physical successor to Father Damien, he is very worthy of remembrance. The State Archives is blessed to have his manuscript collection, his letters, his photographs, describing what the conditions were like. We stand very firmly in the belief that those who do not remember their past are condemned to repeat it. Kalopapa is one of those things we should never forget, never repeat. So I thank you for the opportunity to testify, and always happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Up next, I have Brenda Duarte with the Joseph Dutton Guild member in support. Not present. I have Patrick Bolin, also with the Joseph Dutton Guild in support, in person.
Chair Capella, Representative Lee, thanks for the opportunity to testify on this bill. I am Patrick Bolin, representing the Joseph Dutton Guild. The Guild supports the bill very strongly. The merits of the bill are expressed very well in Section 1 and in the written testimony you have received. You have my written testimony. I won't bother to read it. In summary, Dutton spent the last 44 years of his life in the community at Kalopapa Settlement, serving the unfortunates that were banished there by society. This extraordinary life of service and dedication deserves the recognition that is present in this bill. So thanks again for the opportunity to testify. I'm fairly well aware of Brother Dutton's life, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And thanks also to DAGs, State Archives.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bolin, for your testimony and for your support of this measure. On this, that was all I have on my in-person and Zoom testifiers list. I will note that I have testimony in support from St. Patrick Monastery, along with another individual. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our next measure, HB 345, excuse me, relating to the state shrimp, which would establish opaiula as the state shrimp to protect alkaline pool systems throughout the state of Hawaii. Up first, I have DLNR in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair Capella. Representative Lee, Brian Nielsen, on behalf of Department of Land and Natural Resources, we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. I also have Olan Le Momi Fisher and Kevin Chang with Kua Aina Ulu Awamal in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair Capella and Rep. Lee. I'm Olan Le Momi Fisher, advocate with Kua Aina Ulu Awamal, also known as Kua. And we support three large state networks. And this bill is coming out of requests from some of our community members that are in our Hui Ma Lama Local Ia network, our fish pond network. And they help to protect vai kai or vai opaiula that house these shrimp. And they attempted in 2019 to get this measure passed, but it ended up not moving. And so this is a second attempt. And we stand in strong support, of course, for this. So we just urge you to please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I believe that's all I have on my testifiers list. But there are numerous individuals in support of this measure. I will note that I also have Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition providing written comments. There is testimony in support from Hawaii Wildlife Fund, testimony in support from Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action, and testimony providing comments from Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. And there are 16 people in support. Members, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our next measure, HB 194 relating to Maritime Day. We have one person in support, Jacob Winesack, an individual, providing written testimony only. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, and seeing that there's no one to provide any questions or answers, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to HB 554. First up, we have Department of Budget and Finance, providing comments only on this measure. Not here. We also have the Office of Collective Bargaining, providing comments. Also not here. That's all I have on my testifiers. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Forgive me. There's more. I also have Taini Hisai on Zoom in support. Okay. And I have Chloe, an individual via Zoom, in support. Thanks for being here, Chloe.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair of the Board. I'm Chloe Franklin, senior at Kalaheo High School. And I wanted to express that I'm in favor of HB 554 on the grounds of it being supportive of the diversity in Hawaii, as well as being economically prosperous for Asian-American-owned stores. As we know, with federal and state holidays, the endorphins in the air leads to an increase in special merchandise sales relating to that holiday. And with families who can come together and celebrate with other community members, there's an opportunity to go out and purchase goods from those Asian-American-owned stores, as well as it being supportive of the 37.3% of Hawaii's population that is Asian-American, and allowing them to take the time to celebrate the holiday that is important to them from their culture and their history. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chloe. I also have Davina in support via Zoom. Okay, not present. I will note that there are, there are a handful of people that have provided, there are five people in support and three people with comments. I have a question for Chloe.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, I really appreciate your comments and your testimony outlining the numerous benefits that we would get by creating Lunar New Year as a holiday. Can you, though, tell me what it would mean for you if we were to establish a holiday for Lunar New Year?
For me, I think it's very important to celebrate culture, no matter where it comes from. And being a child in America, where I myself know so many people of diverse cultures and histories, to be able to experience that alongside my friends in my community.
Davina, thank, Chloe, thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you for sharing that. Representative Lee, do you also have any questions? Okay, perfect. Chloe, I just want to thank you so much for being, for being a part of today's hearing. You were definitely a highlight for me. We're going to move on to our next measure, and it's our last measure of the day. That's going to be HB 957. Up first, I have, I will note that I have testimony in support from the Hawaii Farm Bureau, but it's written testimony only. My list says that I have a Renette Kay, also in support via Zoom.
Not present.
Okay, not present. I have a Nelson, individual in support via Zoom.
Also not present.
Also not present. Okay. I will note that that's all I had on my testifiers list. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony in support of HB 957 relating to La Lao Day? Okay, seeing none, I just want to note that I have on my testifiers list about 36 individuals who have written testimony in support. Seeing that there's no one to ask questions of, we are going to recess for decision-making. Recession. We are gabbling back in for decision-making on our 10:30 a.m. agenda. We are just jumping straight into it. Our first measure is HB 531 relating to special license plates for the University of Hawaii Cancer Center. I recommend that we move this forward with technical amendments. We will be adding its effective date of July 1, 3,000. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HB 531 with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Lee.
Aye.
Representative Sayama.
Aye.
Representative Rezolda, not present, excuse. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Moving on to HB 458 relating to Brother Joseph Dutton Day, I recommend that we pass this, adding only a defective date of July 1, 3,000. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HB 458 with amendments. Are there any noes or with reservations? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Moving on to HB 345 relating to the state shrimp, establishing the opaiula as the state shrimp to protect alkaline pool systems throughout Hawaii. I recommend that we move this forward with technical amendments only. We will just be defecting the date to July 1, 3,000. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HB 345 with amendments. Are there any noes or with reservations? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Moving on to HB 194 relating to Maritime Day, I would like to move this forward with amendments. On page 1, line 10, and page 2, line 3, we will be adding the date May 22nd to align with National Maritime Day. We will also be defecting the date to July 1, 3,000. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 194 with amendments. Are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Moving on to HB 554 relating to state holidays, designating the second day, the day of the second new moon after winter solstice of each year as Lunar New Year. It establishes Lunar New Year as a state holiday. I would like to move this measure forward with amendments. We're going to be removing Section 2. The reason we're going to be doing this is because it, it costs about $9 million to establish a new state holiday. So the amendment will read, "Chapter 8 Hawaii Revised Statute is amended by adding a new section to be appropriately designated," and will read as follows. Lunar New Year, the second new moon after winter solstice shall be known and designated as Lunar New Year. This day shall not be constructed as a new state holiday, and we will be adding a defective date of July 1, 3,000. I want to mention that it's incredibly important that we recognize Lunar New Year as a day of recognition and support the many wonderful cultural and diverse aspects that our Asian community brings to Hawaii. And by designating Lunar New Year as a day of recognition, I think it will be a benefit for the entire state. I reckon, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HB 554 with amendments. Are there any noes or with reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, members. Moving on to our last measure, HB 957 relating to La Lao Day. This bill would designate May 1 of each year as La Lao Day in the state of Hawaii. I'm going to recommend that we move this forward with amendments. I personally really love May Day. So we will actually be, instead of May 1, we're going to be establishing the first Friday of May as La Lao Day. So we will be amending page 2, line 6, to read "The first Friday of May officially designating the first Friday of May as La Lao Day." We will be adding a defective date of July 1, 3,000. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on HB 957 with amendments. Are there any noes or with reservations? Seeing none, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.